As well. So I hope to answer your question.
Through the mayor. Measure W and measure A together are about seven and a half million dollars. Measure W is through the Samtrans Initiative that was passed. And has about, I could pay the money.
Yes, here I am again, sorry. Measure S, um, measure A is about three million dollar a year that the city get allocated from the county. Measure W, it's probably a bigger part at the county side, but we only receive about one million dollar a year. So this is also a really stable revenue. About one million dollar a year, never missed. So that's about the size of measure W we have.
Through, through the mayor again, they award about 10 projects every two years. It's actually done through the TA. So that's another venue, not just money coming in, but also projects.
Great.
Steph notes that.
Excellent. Okay, Councilmember Lorraine.
Thank you, through the mayor. I appreciate the discussions we've had tonight. I think in general, I am in favor of what's been brought forward. I am comfortable with staff's proposed language on the proposal related to quick build projects. And I managed to miss the number. But let's see if I can find. Let's see. I think it's, I think it's, could be, all right, well, it's not 37.
Twenty-four?
It is 24. Thank you. There's recommended language there. I apologize for that. Related to kind of having it be more safety project focused. I think that resonates both with what we've heard through the community and, well, I think it frankly resonates there and I resonate with that. Let's put it that way. So that, that works for me. And I would like to hold on to my current language for number 37 at this time. With the understanding that we're going to have a study session at some point and, and perhaps then we can dive in together to what is possible and by when. But I, I guess I, I feel that the proposed modification, I think, removes a bit of the urgency and the idea behind the priority. So I'd like to hold on to it at this time with the knowledge that when we dig into it, what we find may, may change. Uh, let's see. Not much more. I'm, I'm, I just appreciate this process. City manager mentioned appreciating council's restraint. And, and I would reverse it and, and appreciate the city manager's willingness to work within those constraints to make as much of what has been proposed possible through our budget process despite, you know, the, the, the way the economy's been going and, and, and our overall outlook, staffing gaps that we're trying to fill and have done a good job in filling to date, but still have a ways to go. So I'm, I'm excited for what will come next. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee.
Yes, thank you. I, I also am largely supportive of our hard work and restraint and capacity. And I, I guess I have a couple, just a couple of points of, of feedback. I, I think that, you know, the point that Mike Swire made and many, many community advocates have made about some of the, the greatest challenges that we have in the city, like climate change, right? Where it feels, you know, so the enormity of the problem is so big. And the way that we come at it is, is complicated and, and sort of discreet at times and limited by resources. And so there's, there's a bit of analysis paralysis sometimes and where we have, we have so many plans, we have so many different plans that talk to each other or sometimes don't talk to each other, or they, you know, they have overlapping and sometimes disparate scoping. And, and so I want to offer a little push on our decarb strategy, recognizing that there are potentially very serious limitations on what we can do regarding the reach codes. But, you know, I'm a pen to paper, let's get things done kind of person. And I wonder if there would be consensus among council to, to make a small amendment to number one, I hope is relatively small and within scope, to specifically look at, at pursuing the IRA grants for this coming fiscal year that would direct resources to our equity community priority areas and, and help bring resources to, to electrification and clean energy for community. So I think that that's from, from my perspective, you know, it goes beyond just the sort of extensive community outreach. Like we are, I already adopted the Climate Action Plan. So I want, so to do, you know, to go through many, many more years of the decarb plan and analysis, there's a part of me, there's a very strong desire in me to, to craft a very tangible and concrete work plan, action item, that's specifically speaking to going after money and bringing it home. So I would like to offer that as a, as a suggested amendment for number one. And then, and then number, my second point, sort of in the same vein, is I was really pleased to see the, the effort that Councilmember Lorraine made to quantify many aspects of supporting safe and multimodal transit on our roadways and getting very hard dollar amounts associated with those commitments. And, and also specifying with the community and with our own department, what we mean when we say quick build, you know, and, and how we can lower barriers to, to implementation when we have a more flexible definition of what quick build means. And so, and I don't know if that's something we need to flesh out further. Do we, are we clear on that?
I, I think as we see it, it was item 30. Yeah, the quick filter 24 with, with, sorry. Two days here.
Two days, day two, yes.
So, so really when we look at item 24, there is a line item in there. I believe it's the 50,000. That kind of goes to what the public speakers were saying. Let's get paint and let's get going and really, really go. So there's semantics there, right? Of what quick build. And then there's also the, the quick bills that are part of the 2020 bike pad plan too that we're working on as well. So it's kind of bridging both.
Great. So you feel like it's captured?
That's, that's.
Broadest definition of quick build.
Looking at our public works director, that's, yeah, he's nodding.
Okay, he's nodding. That's great. Wonderful. And then, and lastly, I'll just say that, you know, probably the most meaningful of all of these, these, these goals for this year is, is the support for our sister city relationship. And it says a lot when a city employee, public servant dedicates 40, almost 44 years of his life as a volunteer to a program and then sits through, what are we at? Seven hours of, of meetings to say three, to speak for just three minutes and convey how transformative and important this peacekeeping program is in our city. And, and the sustained support that our organizational departments can provide if we formalize that program and when we formalize that program. So this is, this is a very, this is a very important moment for, for our sister city program that I truly believe is going to set the course for the next 60 years of success. So I'm very, very excited to, you know, to have, have been a part of this effort and grateful for all of the community members who have, who have paved the way to make that happen. And I will note that the, one of our friends from Toyanaka who came to visit us, I hosted and will host again in a couple of days. So it is a truly a gift that keeps on giving in, in developing relationships across the globe.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Newsom. Oh, hold on one second. Councilmember Lorraine.
Thank you. Through the mayor, just the quickest comment. The Councilmember Lee's comments reminded me that I actually would like to take part of the staff's proposed language suggestion for number 37 on quick build specifically, not to be too confusing, but that was brought up by Director Fabry. And I am, I am, I, I would be happy to take that suggestion to add the language about that the final clause of prioritizing quick build projects were possible so that we get effectively both types of quick build covered. And thank you.
Take it while you got it. Deputy Mayor Newsom.
Well, I just would like to thank staff for all their hard work with this, putting this together. I'm thrilled that we're going to be able to, to really work on a lot of this. And that's the whole council and staff's effort of parsing this down to an attainable list, which is fantastic. I think we just need to get out there and keep hiring and try to get tech grant writers as well and grant funding possible to help us fund it. And great work. I guess the only other thing that came up in public comment, which I made a note here was, could anybody shed light on what our socially responsible investment strategy looks like currently?
So I'll ask our finance director, Karen, to speak to our finance strategy, the socially responsible finance strategy. And I know it came before the council last year. Guess heard it twice, I think.
I, I recently looked into that issue and it turns out last year around same time this year, in March and April, we have a really thorough study session about this topic. And immediately followed that in, in the next council meeting, we adopted a investment policy where we added language specifically to prohibit our city investment into, I think the specific, specific language is saying, we prohibit investment into business with their major revenue coming for fossil fuel or weapon and fire.
Tobacco.
That are not using the US defense and including tobacco too. So all three factors were written into our investment policy already to address the issue.
And we don't invest. We don't invest.
We don't, we don't have any holding at all in our investment portfolios. So I hope that we have got that covered, but we look to our council for, for the direction if you have any other initiatives.
Got it.
Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you.
Great work.
Okay. Councilmember Hedges, was that a hand? You're unmuted, you're muted.
I was just going to agree with her. She was absolutely right. We were all here when we did it.
Yes, we were. Ah, okay, thank you. And I second everybody's congratulations and really good work. And now let's just go get the work done. So with that, we need a motion.
Oh, before we do that, I just want to get a point of clarity. So I just want to make sure, because I just want to have consensus, that staff will go back, our city clerks also go back rewrite of 26 per Councilmember Lee's suggestion specifically in what our city clerk Patrice Olds articulated as the direction. And then item 37, Councilmember Lorraine raised, and this is about the, the bike pad and keeping his old language for the first half, keeping the last sentence of our public works director for prioritizing quick build projects where feasible. I'm seeing nodding heads. Have direction. Thank you.
As proposed by Director Fabry. Yes, please.
There was one idea and I would love to get council feedback on the, the specific point of, of designating a grant writer to go after the IRA grants for the, for the equity community priority areas. And so I, I wonder if there's council support for that effort as well?
Support.
So, so just one item, I just want to be very clear. We don't know what the final policy of the council is going to be in this area. So I totally get wanting to be aggressive and get going on this, but we also need to know where we land on our decarb strategy in order to know how we, we put those funds forward. We have to have some type of direction with that. And then additionally, just from a staffing standpoint, right now, we have some gaps right now in, in coverage, but I think it is something that we can look at and I'm happy, I'm all about going after other people's money. So know that we're going to aggressively be looking at just where the opportunities lie to go after. I just can't fully, I can't sit here and say, I can fully commit and say I can deliver because I don't know the, the final outcome of the strategy.
And do you probably have the same problem as you do with the other consultant? That you don't have somebody to manage them?
Oh, it's the same, it's the same issue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so then can I, can I ask then for a report out about, about the grant opportunities that we're seeking to bring the RA money to the city and, and specifically the, the potential for sustainability funding for equity community priority areas?
Absolutely. And so the vision that, or the approach that I've done in the past in my, in my previous roles is having a citywide grants management team. But then there's also an annual report so that the council will know exactly what grants we went after, how successful we were and how it aligns with the city's strategy. So that's something that we will be working on. I just got to set the whole system up and get the right people on board. But yes, absolutely. I hear you loud and clear and we will be as aggressive.
Okay. I can live with that.
Through the mayor, if I may, so no vote at the council is being requested tonight. This is just council direction. And then in a council meeting in April, it would be, this will be on the consent calendar for a final vote.
I just had motion from council on my script. Great. So then let's move on to reports and announcements. Thank you very much. Councilmember Hedges, start us off.
Okay, so I think our community on so many issues is divided and it's troubling to I haven't changed my mind from last week. I don't know whether we're going to bring it up again. I affirm we don't. Also, I've gotten so many emails on electrification and also on, from regarding the Baywood Historical District. I was wondering if anybody's interested. I've had this request on maybe doing to that neighborhood a recommendation vote where people actually weigh in so we can clarify about what people are thinking about the Heritage Alliance that would inform the city council before we get word from the state. I don't know whether anybody's interested doing that. I would be a simple majority. I've had comments from people on both sides of it that are very respected in the community.
I guess, oh, sorry. Through the mayor, I, I appreciate Councilmember Hedges bringing this up and, and I, I certainly would support the most democratic process for, for this neighborhood of 444 properties that are being written into a historic district, many without their knowledge and without their consent. And so we have a chance to reset this process by, by showing leadership and supporting a resolution that would, that would encourage the stakeholders to, to do a neutral and, and fair voting process that would establish the true will of the community. And, and so I, I am certainly in support of, of bringing forward a resolution to that effect and, and would support it being agendized.
Through the mayor, if I may, so just on this topic, I mean, this is something that the Cooper people has brought to this state. And the, the city isn't directly involved in that, in that process as so, and perhaps other staff, you know, has, can add something as to future engagement efforts on, on this issue, but just on the question of providing for some sort of majority vote of homeowners in the area, that, that's something that's within the purview of the State Office of Historic Preservation. And in terms of the policies that they implement, you know, that, that's something that's within their purview. And the city's not actively involved in that, in that process.
So just for clarification, my understanding is that the request is to, is to draft a, and consider a, a non-binding resolution that is essentially a statement of position that we, that we as the council support a, a democratic process in the form of a vote for that community. And, and it's not, you know, it's not taking a position, right? Which if this application, you know, continues to proceed, the city will have an opportunity to take a position or not, right? That's a, that's a different decision point than what is being discussed right now, which is a non-binding resolution, which is essentially reiterating what I hope we can all agree to support the most democratic process that, that is available, which is a legitimate vote. So, so there are two different things and I appreciate your distinction. I don't think that this is in any way in conflict with the, you know, with the prescribed process that the state would involve the city in. This is a separate effort that is led by the community, the impacted community that's asking council to take leadership and support their request for a voted, a voting process.
I understand the comment. I don't mean to imply that there's some conflict between what's being suggested and the State Office of Historic Preservation process for state consideration of a district. They are, they are different things and that's really a choice for the council to make whether to weigh in on this topic at, at this stage.
Correct. So, so it sounds like there's interest from Councilmember Hedges and myself to agendize a resolution. I'm curious.
If I could, through the mayor, just briefly, I wasn't suggesting taking a position. I'm suggesting just clearing the air on where people stand on this. So we'll know what the community's thinking.
Can I just, I'm, I can't take a position right now in this specific district because I have recused myself, but I can update the council that there are many discussions going on right now in the community and that I would recommend we let those discussions happen. Whichever way it winds up, it's going to wind up. And really, at the end of the day, it comes down to the reality of what does this mean? And I think that's something that the city has a huge role in because the citywide ordinance for how you deal with historic resources is really the answer. But I, you know, I, I cannot vote on this right now.
So on the historic resources program point, once again, kind of like what we were talking about with Vision Zero, so come this June or July, talking about implementation, because just this evening, we went ahead and, or the council went ahead and adopted the general plan, which also includes a policy about the historic resources program. And so that'll be an opportunity to be able to lay out exactly the timing of having that discussion more broadly citywide, whether or not you want to put, you know, as a council, give staff direction to take it on next year or not.
Can I ask Councilmember Hedges for further clarification? So it's, it sounded like you were suggesting that you wanted to, you wanted to agendize this item to support a vote. Is that, did I misunderstand?
That's what I was suggesting because, I mean, we had conflict tonight between what people felt some things were saying in the general plan and what was needed and not needed. And I'd just like to, number one, know how the community stands on this. It would make my job a lot easier.
So you're, so, so that, so my interpretation was correct, that you're, you're in support of agendizing this for, for the purposes of adopting a resolution to support a vote? A non-binding resolution that would support the vote? Or I'm, you're, I'm sorry, you're muted again.
I would just say that if there's a majority of the council, that we bring it forward and question whether we want to do a, a community-wide, not a city-wide, community-wide vote on how people feel about it within the Baywood community.
So, so I'm just, I'm just trying to better understand because at one end, I'm hearing a resolution to, you know, urge for a vote, but then Councilmember Hedges, are you saying you want the city to conduct the vote?
Yeah. So I think, I think the public, so I think what I heard in the packet that we received from, from, from the speakers, they were specifically asking the city, the city council to, to agendize a consideration for a resolution that would urge the community to partake in a voting process. I don't believe that they are asking the city to administer a, the vote or any ballots. So I, I want to clarify that and I don't, and I would agree that that would be completely out of scope and not something that we don't have expertise or capacity for. But we certainly, as elected leaders, have the capacity and I would argue have the moral obligation to respond to a community, a neighborhood issue that is impacting 444 property owners and has been incredibly divisive. So, you know, I think it's quite reasonable for our community to request a legitimate and democratic voting process. And their ask to counsel tonight was to consider a non-binding resolution that is essentially a statement in greeting to that.
So let me tell you what I actually was asking for. So I was suggesting that the city, either by hiring consultants, because there's plenty of people that do votes, I actually do them for labor unions, where you would mail the 444 questionnaires, polls, whatever you want to call it, you can call it election, where we get a view of how people, at least the majority of the people are willing to, to write down how they feel, would vote on whether they're for or against this process. I think it's pretty simple and it gives us information as to where the community stands. And I always want information on where the community stands.
Through the mayor, if I can.
Yes.
So I, I wouldn't recommend that the city get involved in conducting a vote of folks in that, in the area when there's a process underway between the proponents of this effort and, and the state. It's, it's one thing for the council to adopt a resolution one way or the other, either supporting or opposing, you know, whatever the council's position, whatever the council would want to do in terms of taking a position is one thing. Actually facilitating a vote is entirely another. So I would think twice about launching into that effort. I'll also just frankly kind of note the time, like this is a. Like, this is a pretty significant topic. There's a lot of, I'd say, strong feelings on either side. This isn't legal advice per se, but for the council to provide some direction at almost 1:00 in the morning, I mean, I would think about whether this is something you want to take up at another meeting, like, and to consider whether to agendize it maybe at the next meeting, not to put it on the agenda for the next meeting, but perhaps during the reports and announcements portion of the upcoming meeting, when maybe there's some fresh minds to actually consider this issue, something to consider.
I personally think that's a great suggestion, not to do it right now, because, as you said, it is, there are lots of feelings on both sides, there are lots of facts, and the process itself is a state process, so.
Well, this is the third time that the community has come to council and asked for council action. And this is, now I'm losing count for the number of times that our mayor, who has stated recusal, has spoken on the issue. And, and so, you know, it is late in the hour, but this is not a new issue. This is a pre-existing issue that this council has not taken action on after multiple calls from community. And so, you know, this seems, it seems very straightforward to me to at least consider agendizing it.
So I have a question for the city attorney, if I may, so that I'm clear. So I thought at some point the city council is going to weigh in on this or be requested to weigh in. Is that not correct?
I don't know if that's a legal issue per se, perhaps, the city manager, assistant city manager, could weigh in on that?
My understanding is as part of this process that the city would be notified and would have an opportunity to be up to the council, whether or not you'd have to take a, we'd have to see that there's consensus to actually engage and provide a comment on behalf of the city and just what we're positioning as at that point in time as part of the process. That's my understanding. Correct me if I'm wrong. That's our.
And that's why, then Alex, that's why I brought this up, because I thought at some point we'd be asked to weigh in on it, and I'd like to have that information.
But we're not at that point in the process just yet, Councilmember Hedges.
I realize that, but it, what, at what point would we do that? Because it takes time to do it.
My understanding is that when the state gets to a certain point in the process of reviewing the application, there would be a point where we would be asked if we do or don't want to weigh in, and that would be the point at which the city could make, could take a formal position and weigh in on its thoughts if it chose to. But I don't think that the application is complete yet. And normally, just like we process applications here at the city, we reserve our, or ask our public to reserve the comments for when the application is complete. It's the same thing, only in this case, we're the commenters and the state is the one processing the application.
Okay, then I would just suggest that we agendize it for some time in the future.
Well, through the mayor, I want to be on record that this council will be so much better equipped to take a position if there is in fact a vote. And right now, there are no plans for a vote to actually occur. And that is what is being requested by the community right now, is do we support a democratic process, including a voting process? Because I think that we will be very, it'll be challenging potentially to actually eventually take a position if this council chooses to, when we don't have any neutral data that would, that would demonstrate majority or supermajority support. And so this, this request right now coming to this council is do we support a democratic process to establish the true will of the community? That is, that is what this council is being asked to take a position on and to agendize.
So understanding the hour, I just want to see, is there consensus for either further discussion on this item or to bring back a resolution of what you're saying about urging for some vote, not the city doing the vote, but is there any consensus to bring back that item? I hear, one, Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Two?
I'd like to pick up the conversation, not tonight.
Okay. So we've got one, one, one wanting to have a conversation at a later date?
Yeah, I said a later date.
A later date. So you want to continue this conversation down the line then, Councilmember Hedges?
I think it makes sense that it is late, yeah. So, but I, at some point, not too far down, I think we need to consider it.
Are you suggesting to agendize it later, or are you suggesting that we discuss under reports and announcements if we want to agendize it? Okay, so we have two for agendizing it.
Sorry, but I am not interested in this at this time.
So, and mayor, or you're recruiting yourself?
I don't think I can.
You're not? Okay, so it's two, two, so it doesn't get us anywhere. I'm looking at our attorney that I have, it fails at this time.
I understand.
Yes, please.
I do apologize for bringing this up at this time, but it's my understanding that I need to, if I want to make this specific request. Mayor and council, I would like to be added to the appointments subcommittee for the planning commission vacancy. I was under the impression that I could potentially ask for this during reports and announcements tonight, but during the meeting, it occurred to me after rereading the admin report for item 13 under consent, that the best time to do that would have been earlier when we were reading through the consent items. So I apologize for my confusion, but I discussed this with the city attorney, and he indicated that if the council agreed to reconsider that particular item, to add, if they were, if council were interested in reconsidering the item, then perhaps we could reconsider it with that minor change. And I would like to humbly request for that, please.
I'm interested in that as well, because it was really confusing about this discussion, about when, when exactly are we supposed to notify that we want to be part of the subcommittee? I was under the impression that if we, if we just provided advance notice before the set meeting time, that, you know, for the interviews, that that would be sufficient public noticing. So that, I think, was a misunderstanding.
It's a misunderstanding, because I thought anyone could sit in on the interviews.
Just, if I can provide a little bit of clarification, so Councilmember Lorraine's referring again to item 13 on the consent calendar that was already approved relating to, among other things, the appointment subcommittees. And in that staff report, what it says is that the guidelines allow other council members to participate as a member of the appointment subcommittee, and that the council has an opportunity to add their names as participant to any appointment subcommittee. And then the council guidelines also specify that an appointment subcommittee may include up to five city council members, which also raises a noticing question too, but still, like, our process allows for up to the entire council to be an appointment, also act as an appointment subcommittee. Now, procedurally, what's happening here is Councilmember Lorraine is asking for a motion for reconsideration, which you can do. It simply requires, under our rules of procedure, Rosenberg's Rules of Order, for the council to pass a motion for reconsideration of that item, and then you could take up the item again tonight, as if you had never considered it before. So you can do it if you, if the majority of the council wants to.
Do we need to?
If you're going to, if I can just answer that question, if you're going to, well, if you're, if you're going to reconsider this particular item, normally what you would do is reconsider that item tonight. I don't know if anyone from the city clerk's office has any opinions on this, but in terms of, in terms of the appointment subcommittee, I mean, I guess there's a question of can, could the council bring back simply the appointment subcommittee for the planning commission at a, at a future council meeting?
I guess I was to clarify, like, do we need to in the sense of, so if I wanted to participate in the personnel board, and that's the mayor and Councilmember Hedges, I should have already said so? Or is it in fact the case that it is open?
May I, if I could go ahead, and how we have traditionally done it and how our council rules and procedures are still written, is it comes forward on the consent calendar, and if you have an interest in adding your name to one of the appointment subcommittees, because it is considered a Brown Act body that we have to agendize with all the members listed. And then if we do get to a quorum, three or more who want to be on it, that's a quorum of the city council, and we agendize it differently, because then it's city council acting as the appointment subcommittee instead of just the appointment subcommittee. So we have plenty of time, because we did this a little earlier than we usually do. We can bring this back April 1st.
Yeah, no, I think that's fine.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess I always thought that anyone who wanted to be part of it.
No, because of the requirements of agendizing.
There'd be different kind of notifications.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. And is it, I guess one of the things we should talk about April 1st then, is the way it is right now. It's the mayor and the deputy mayor that are related to the planning commission. So, you know, whether, is it deputy mayor and mayor and the deputy mayor plus you, or is it whatever the positions are? So we don't need to talk about that tonight.
It will be whoever the other council members would like to join.
Right, exactly.
And then we just make sure that all their members are, all the members are listed.
That's great, but we're not talking about it, so.
Okay, so you'll see this again April 1st.
Yes, please. Thank you.
So.
Sorry for the confusion.
No problem. Okay, does anyone have anything else they'd like to report or announce?
Go to California Pete's Kitchen tomorrow and support pal by buying pizza.
Yes. And the Best of San Mateo Area Awards have opened up. Go to San Mateo Chamber and vote by the 14th of April. Thank you all. Good night.
I want to thank everybody, especially our staff, for hanging in this long time and all the work they've done tonight. Everybody's been great. Thank you.
Excellent. Aloha. Good night. The meeting.
Yesterday there, right?
That's right. Aloha. Good morning.